Everybody hear me? Joanna?
Yes.
All right, let's get going. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Nottingham Planning Board on Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. I just need to read a specific statement relative to COVID-19. So bear with me. The Chairman of the Nottingham Planning Board has found that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-08, SRPC and committees are authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there are no physical locations to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Government's Emergency Order. The Nottingham Planning Board is utilizing Zoom for electronic meeting. All members of the committee have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, throughout this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting as follows. So we have provided online access as well as telephone access. So this meeting call us to order. And I would like to go through a couple of things. So tonight, we have an agenda that has basically three cases on it. And we will take each case in order. And I would like to kind of control some of the comments. If you do have a comment, and what I would plan on doing is reading through the case and then allowing the applicant to present that case. And then the board will have time to discuss that case. And then we'll either take action or some other form necessary to move the meeting along or move those applications along. Again, bear with us. We're trying to do this through the Zoom meeting. And so there is a location that I'll have to figure it out. In the right-hand side, if you show the participants, the right-hand side, there is a location where you can raise your hand. And for each case, you'll have to raise your hand separately. And what we'll do is we'll have, I'm not sure if Joanna or Steph will moderate that, but I will call by name the person who has their hand up if they have a question. And then Steph or Joanna will unmute them. Otherwise, everybody will stay muted with the exception of the board, which will require to vote and ask questions. So at this point, I just want to take a roll call vote for those that are in attendance for the public knowledge and for the record. For each member that I read off, if you would just say, say yes, in acknowledgement that you're in attendance. Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veale?
It's the planning meeting about the lot adjustments.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
I see Tyler up there. He's muted. If you could unmute Tyler.
Yes.
Okay. Tyler, I'm assuming you're Selectman's representative for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Leanne Gass?
Yes.
Who have I not called? Sorry. Okay, so is Sue Mooney? Is Sue Mooney available here? Okay, Sue Mooney is on.
No.
Okay, anyone who else is not coming, a board member who won't, is not coming?
That's the only board member I've heard from.
Okay. So I will, before we move forward, I'll seek Leanne Gass for Sue Mooney.
Okay.
We had seven voting members for the board tonight. Joanna and Steph, I'm gonna look to you guys a little bit. Is there anything before we move into the public hearing agenda?
Um, so just wanted to remind everybody to please keep their themselves muted until they've been asked to to speak. That'll keep the background noise down and keep the meeting running smooth.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go into the first case. This is a rescheduled to today, May 13th, 2020. So this is EverSource Scenic Road trimming removal. The notice is hereby given that Planning Board will hold a public meeting regarding this. The purpose of this is to discuss a request from EverSource Energy for trimming along the following scenic roads, which is Stevens Hill, Case Road, Galle Road, Ledge Farm Road, Mitchell Road, and Poor Farm Road. As a requirement for our scenic roads for tree trimming, it is required to get approval through the Planning Board. We do have the letter from EverSource and map indicating the trees that they're planting on on each individual road. Is anyone here from EverSource? The letter was signed by Robert Bernier.
Yes, Mr. Bernier is here.
Okay, could you unmute him?
Yeah, you're unmuted now, right, Mr. Bernier?
You're a little cutting out, maybe just see if you can get closer to the microphone.
Again, good evening. I'm Bob Bernier from EverSource. EverSource sees a picture of the planning, the tree removal, brush and tree, the application of scenic. Clear and standard remain same. Lives and branches, eight feet to the side, 10 feet below, and 15 feet above our conductors. In addition, brush grown underneath our lands will be ordered for me. Any budding property owners have been notified by mail of ever shorting and intending to train at least 45 days prior to the start of the year. Thirteen hazard trees have been identified on various scenic roads that have been shorted. Once approval from the board has been granted, we will then contact each individual property owner of those trees and speak with them and seek approval on a one-on-one basis. Aspen Tree Experts is our contractor selected for this project. We expect to complete this work within the next few weeks.
Great, thank you. A little jumbled on the audio, but we do have an application that has a lot of detail to it. Appreciate it. They do have an arborist that has gone out and viewed these trees. And they're deemed that they need to come down to provide adequate electrical supply and for safety. And so I would like to bring it to the board if there are any board questions regarding this application. And I'll, after this, go into the public hearing if there are any public wishing to ask questions about this.
Chairman Ed Veale, I know Ms. Mooney had sent in just general items about the the term brush and trying to get a little more clarification if, when possible, if there's different, you know, there's like woody items and things like that, or things with wildlife value. And if any of that could be left when it's found as opposed to just, just direct removal. Obviously nesting time and things like that correlate with some of this.
One of our customers requests may be the brush behind or in the brush. Certainly be known from that of the customer. But I'm sure you realize brush has the ability to remove trees and we do not wish to permit trees. But we certainly discuss it with any of the property owners we have.
Any other comments, questions from the board members? Okay, seeing no further questions from the board members, would like to open it to public comments. So this is a time, if you have questions for the applicant or for the board regarding this specific application. I guess Steph or Joanna, you'll manage that. I don't see any hands raised at this point. Okay, so what I'd like to do, Joanna, would you be able to take everybody off of mute? And I just want to make sure that somebody isn't having troubles raising their hand. Give them the opportunity to just ask the question.
Okay, I have unmuted everyone. A few people are choosing mute on their own.
Okay, so at this point, I don't see any other questions from the public. Give it one more minute, one more second. And that's, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action. So at this point, we would be entertain a motion to accept the tree trimming removal as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the tree trimming as presented according to RSA 231-158-213 trees on Stevens on Stevens Hill Road, Case Road, and Galle Road.
Motion, is there a second from the board?
I'll second it. Tyler Eaton.
Thank you.
Tyler? I'll roll call Gary Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, point of order. I think we missed three roads. Just want to make sure we get them all captured on the.
So Stevens Hill Road, Case Road, Galle Road, Ledge Farm Road, Mitchell Road, and Poor Farm Road.
Yeah, I didn't know if the last three were in the motion.
Yes, and the motion to add Ledge Farm Road. And I'm not sure which other one I'm missing here.
Mitchell and Poor Farm.
Yeah, they're, they're all what was applied for. Okay, so the motion is for Stevens Hill, Case Road, Galle Road, Ledge Farm Road, Mitchell Road, and Poor Farm Road. And Mr. Eaton had seconded that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll roll call. Any other discussion? Again, I'll just start with Gary Anderson.
Gary, yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veale?
Yes.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a yes, so that's unanimous. Mr. Bernier, I appreciate your time and take care of our trees. Thank you. We'll move on to case number 20002 LLA, an application for a lot line adjustment from Leslie and Barbara Thompson. Michael Dougherty, revocable trust, Michael Dougherty and Beth Phillips. Michelle Lafrave, revocable trust. Mark and Michelle Lafrave. Matthew and Sedan Sinead Eaton, revocable trust. Kevin Bassett. And this is to adjust the lot lines between map 70, lot 25, map 68, lot 5, and 6, map 70, lots 11 and 12. Properties are located in Nottingham. And so this is an application, this is a new application for us. So at the moment, we would acquire an acceptance of this. And this has been reviewed by staff and Strategic Regional Planning Commission. Those comments went out earlier today. One clarification, so in a previous meeting, we had talked to the applicant regarding some zoning that might be needed to be handled. We did find within the town's attorney that the RSA does give them the ability to increase the land as long as the use stays the same. So no variance from zoning would be required to do what is in this application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At this time, do you want the plan presented on the screen?
Sure.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we do have all of the information to complete this application. Yeah, I'm gonna leave Steph or Joanna to make sure of clearly reading through these notes correctly, the staff recommendation. There are a couple minor ones that need clarification. So I'll just read through these comments on submitted waiver requests. No waivers have been requested. So I'm assuming that that note means that no waivers are required. Is that correct, Steph?
Yeah.
Steph or Joanna?
No way. Yeah, so the applicant did not, or applicants in this case, did not request any waivers because none were needed.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. There is some, a need for some of the clarification or some additional information. And I do believe that the applicant does have this, this list. But I'll just read them off here quickly. Please label a note. The proposed lots are in the residential agricultural district, so include the zoning there. Include dimension setback and frontage. Please add a note stating the purpose of the proposal. A little bit of narrative on what the intent is. Please note which roads are on plan or private roads. Note right-of-way dimensions. Utility easements are marked and identified on the checklist. Please identify where details are in the plan set. Signatures indicated on the checklist, please identify where those are in the plan set. Please indicate where septic systems are on the plan. And note changes, corrections, add the following details or icons in the legend. Utility wires, shorelines, fences, stone walls. Please indicate the existing and proposed lot area of the 70-25. And please add no clarifying lot line adjustment process and why no variances were required. And I do want to add my own comment here is adding, labeling the structures that are there. Is there any questions from the, the board? What I'd like to do is have the applicant explain his application. And then we can discuss and ask some questions later. But right now, we are looking at accepting the application. And then if we plan to continue to accept it and hold a public hearing and then vote on it. But first, we'll have to accept it. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, would you like the motion for, to, to move ahead with the application?
Well, I'd like to know if there's any questions or comments on the application from the board. And if there isn't, then I would need a motion to accept it.
This is Matt Eaton. On the notice that we have, it says, Matt lot, Matt 70, lots 11 and 12, that should be lots 11 and 13.
Okay, we'll make sure that the applicant gets the correct lot numbers. Anything else from board members?
No, just point of order. This is Ed Veale. Do we want to have the applicant just give a quick summary of the application before we jump in too much?
Yep, I just wanted to get any comments from the board on, on the application. If there's some questions, so we can head off before the applicant presents it. Hearing no more than who's here to represent the applicant. Please state your name and then at least provide a brief overview of the intent of the project and application.
Did I do that correctly?
We can, we can hear you, Jim.
Oh, good, excellent. My apologies if I stumbled through this. This is my first time.
It's a lot of ours.
Yes, what we are proposing is a lot line adjustment between five properties. And they are, they are listed as lot 68, 5, 68, 6, 70-11, and 70-13, and the parent track of lot 70-25. I've read through the review done by Stephanie Cincella, the Regional Planning Commission. And I don't take exception to anything. She, I think she's done very well with all of this. And I know we've been, I guess it's been quite a while since we started this process.
Yeah.
And the the notes that she made, elements in need of clarification, I could go through each one. And I say that number one, elements in need of clarification, item A, B, and C, not a problem. I'll add those.
Yep.
It says D, please note which roads on plan set are private roads. They are listed in the upper right corner on sheets two and three. I've noted that the roads are private roads.
Okay.
And that's note two in the upper right corner of sheets two and three.
Yep, see that?
Number E has right-of-way dimensions. That is, those are shown on the drawing. They're 33 feet wide. But the private roads are that lead out to Route 56. I don't know. We could try to find out. I'm not sure that it's necessary, but that's up to the board. The item F, utility easements, says are marked as identified on checklist. Please identify where details are in plan set. I don't quite understand that comment. Identify where details are in the plan set, excuse me. There on each drawing, sheets two and sheet three, I have a squiggly line between the utility poles. And I've labeled them as overhead utility lines. And also that the width of the right-of-way is not in the document itself. The owner's signature, yes, I can add those, not a problem. Indicate where septic systems are in the plan sets and setback lines, those things, I think, if I were to add that information to these drawings, it would start to get confusing as to how to show them since we have so much detail. The identifying the crosshatched rectangles as the buildings, I don't have a problem with that. I should have added that myself. And I think at this point, I just assume if there's questions from the board, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, let me, let me ask Steph, could you clarify the comment about identifying the utility easements and details?
Yeah, so I was more looking for the width of the easement.
It's not specified. I'm sorry, but it's not specified.
Okay, yeah, so that's what that, that note was about. If the board wants to dig into that, that's up to them. I don't think in this case it's needed. But it was a checklist item, so I felt the need to put it in my comments.
Yeah, no, thanks for pointing that out, Steph. I mean, we often run across these utility easements that do not have a width to their easement. That's common. All right, well, thank you, Jim. Is there any questions from the planning board that we didn't cover?
The one area that Jim just mentioned, I wasn't sure what he meant by it, about private roads coming off of somewhere, was one of Steph's notes.
Yeah, I think it was because Lamprey Drive comes off of 156 and Lamprey Drive is the private road. And there is, as far as I know, there is no dedicated width to that. There are just separate parcels that run along that roadway and may vary between the parcels.
Okay, I missed the, I missed that, that part of it.
I think, I think that's correct, Jim, right?
Perhaps if I were to spend more time in the, in the recorded documents, I might find a width, but I have not found one yet. And I have searched these titles on each of the, the four parcels were increasing. I searched those titles and all the budding lots back to when they were created by the original subdivision plan. I did not find any reference to the width of the access out to Route 156.
Yeah, I believe that to be correct. We've had Yeah, I believe that to be correct. We've had other subdivision application plans in front of us, specifically for this parent lot. And as far as I know, we have not seen any width for that roadway. Other comments from the board, I know it would be really nice to get setbacks put on this. I know it might be a little busy.
Oh, the meeting's gone to the dogs.
Sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Mr. Chairman, Ian McKinnon, I would say there's probably some value to at least showing the approximate footprint of the septic systems, even if it's as simple as just looking at the topography. I feel like if we're going to show the wells, probably goes quite a long way with that, even if it's as simple as a rectangle with approximate location shown.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Jim, is that something you could assess from maybe input from the owners? Or maybe some physical location out in their indication out in the field?
Yes, yes. And perhaps the building inspector also might have drawings that would help in that.
Yeah.
We will check with him.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from the board? All right, I'll open it up to the public. You have questions regarding this application. I'd like those questions, yes, directed to me. And I'll, in turn, if I can't answer them, have the applicant answer them. I don't see any hands raised.
Mr. Chairman, just point of order, procedural question. Do we actually vote on completeness?
I thought I did a roll call vote. Is that correct or not? Okay.
I think you're right, this is Ed Veal to, I think, butter comments are allowed at this point on depth completeness only.
Yeah, okay, so let's just, I'm not sure if there's any other comments on the completeness before the board votes on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, Ed Veal, that we accept the application for case 20-002-LLA. Lot line adjustment for multiple properties on Lamprey Drive as complete.
Second that.
Who was that that seconded?
Gary.
Gary who?
Anderson.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote of Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veal?
Yes.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gast?
Yeah.
Dirk Rottenheis, yes. So the application is accepted as complete. And we can hold the public hearing for the approval. And since Jim went through a pretty thorough discussion about what the application is for, I would like to open it up to the public now, open the public hearing. If there are any questions or comments on it. Either raise your hand, wave, or try and get our attention otherwise. Okay, seeing no no comments from the public. Let me do that one more time. Anybody from the public wanting to discuss the lot line adjustments on Lamprey Drive? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for discussion or action.
Mr. Chairman, Ed Veal, just a few overall questions and maybe staff can jump in on this. But so with some of the plans, it looks like we already agreed that these are private roads. But it looks like some of the areas, the road is supposed to have continued. But we're now going to be either changing the ownership of that by moving the lot line out and taking over the road. Do we have to do anything separate with that? And are we creating any backlots on any of these?
No, it's my understanding that the easement, the access easement remains.
That's correct.
I don't know if that's what you were asking, Ed.
Yeah, for example, the lot, Lot 11, Map 70, on paper, currently Lamprey Drive goes in front of that lot. And now the lot line, proposed lot line would be moving that line out. So it would look like the Lot 11 would now own that road, that section of the roadway.
Yeah, my understanding is that they would now own it versus the owner of 70-25. And it would remain a private road, but the easement would still be intact. And that easement language would have to go with the legal description. Could you confirm that, Jim?
Yes, excuse me. The, if you have the drawing there, sheet three, I think we're talking about lots 13 and lot 11, specifically on this sheet.
Yeah.
Lamprey Drive, as it was originally approved on the subdivision, was not constructed within that 33-foot wide strip. As you can see, we've shown the gravel access roads, driveways. If I knew how to work this little pointer up here, I would highlight that. But the, there would be no change. When, oh, there it is. Yep. Is that you? Who has that little pointer? That's me or someone. Yep. And the, you can see the gravel driveways, in some cases they're in it. But for the most part, there is no improvement in Lamprey Drive right-of-way. If you go over onto the sheet two. Sheet two, in this case, for Lot 5 and Lot 6, you can see that there is a gravel surface. Yep, go to sheet two. There is a gravel surface that runs from Lamprey Drive in front of or southwesterly of Lot 5 and 6. Now that, on the subdivision plan, there is no name for that. There's not a named roadway. I don't know what their intentions was at the time. We did look for, Joanna, I think spent quite a bit of time looking for the original variance that was granted for that subdivision without any luck. This is, my recollection is, is about 1974, maybe a little earlier. But those accessways, the gravel portion that people travel on, by rights, they would be called prescriptive highways, where they are not in the center or even in some cases within what has been designated as the private roads of Lamprey Drive. So I don't envision any change to that. I think most title examiners would, I think, be aware that this situation exists. I'm not sure. I would think, we could put a note on the plan. I have done so on another draw, subdivision we did. And we can put a note, something to the effect that the gravel roads within Lamprey Drive, or as shown on these plans, are in perpetuity easements for access to the various lots. I'm not sure. Perhaps the board would have some wording, or Steph, perhaps you would have some wording from another town where they've had a similar situation.
I can look in, this is Steph, I can look into some of the language that the other towns have used and forward that along. I would also, you know, with that sale of land, I would assume that the deed language would change a little bit as the boundaries are changing and the easement. So I would also encourage the landowners, particularly of Map 68 Lot 6, to make sure that that easement language reflects that they have access to their property through Map 68 Lot 5. So just make sure the landowners are doing their due diligence to make sure that they still have access to their property legally.
Yeah, and we will as well, before this gets signed for recording, we'll ask for those legal descriptions to make sure that that language is consistent with the legal descriptions for the parent lot.
And Mr. Chairman, Ed Veal again. So with Lot 68, 5, and 6, so right now it's listed as, or shown as like an unnamed road on the plan. If the lot line adjustment is approved, would that become now a shared driveway or common driveway? And are we creating a backlot situation or no? Because it's on, there's no frontage anyway.
Yeah, there is no frontage. I mean, it's exactly the way that they're accessing it today.
I, it's Jim Franklin. I think I understand where the proposed new lot line between lots 5 and 6 and 25, that bold line, rather than being parallel with that unnamed road, is now going to extend into lot, which was Lot 25. And the roadway unnamed road will be an easement over lots 5 and 6.
Yeah.
And I see that, that, yes. So in a sense, it's taking away frontage, but not really, because there is no road there.
Any other questions, Ed or the board?
Last thing I had, and it might be for Steph, is I know there's some language on the plans already. Do we need to add any additional language about this, where this is a private road? That any kind of acceptance or approval of anything here would not bring the town liable for the road? Like this is not an acceptance of the road, basically.
Yeah, I have no problem. I understand the legalities of all that. And whatever wording the board comes up with, Steph's recommendation, I have no problem adding that.
Yeah, we would really need to have the correct language from the legal entity for the town, if we're going to do that. If we're going to make a recommendation. I don't have a, I'm not opposed to doing that. But I want to make sure that it's consistent with whatever our current requirements are.
This is Steph. That is definitely something I can look into and talk to Chris Sterndale and possibly get in touch with town legal counsel on that, just to make sure we have all of our bases covered. It would probably also can be worked into the note that Jim agreed to put on as far as, you know, why the frontage variance is not needed in this case.
If I may, I just want to mention that I believe that, and Tyler may be able to confirm this for us, that the building inspector now, when a permit is issued, is also having the owners sign off on that liability waiver, if you will.
And I apologize, I found the language before. It was either language from New Hampshire OSI or NHMA that had a reference to the RSA, basically just saying best practices, town should be doing, you know, X when, anytime they're dealing with, you know, private roads.
Yep. I think it's a good idea. Okay, I'd entertain a motion. I don't know if the, we have enough language there to put these conditions on it.
Did I do that correctly? Chairman, it's Jim Franklin. I, Stephanie suggested that the the letter that she prepared dated December 16, 2019, regarding the lot line variance application. She'd made a note, or she voiced some concern that perhaps an explanation should be on this plan as to why the variances were not needed. And I think the wording that she has in her letter of December 16th, I can add in its entirety onto the plan with little, little problem.
Okay. So I would say that if a motion is to be made, it would be with the inclusion of the staff's technical comments. So at this point, we, the board, it's back to the board for action.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve case 20-002-LLA. With the provisions of the staff's comments are met.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Joe Clough.
Thank you, Joe. Any board discussion on that motion? Then let me do a roll call vote. This would be for the approval of the application. So Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veal?
Yes.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gast?
Yeah.
And Dirk Rottenheis, yes. So that approves it with those conditions. Mr. Franklin, thank you for your time. And we'll sure reach out to Steph and Joanna on those revisions.
Thank you. Is there, within a certain amount of time, that these additions, things need to be done?
The timing would be all on the applicant, you know, whether there's, you know, deed exchange or something that needs to occur.
30 days, 60 days, 90 days, I'm not sure. Does the board have a requirement or is it open-ended?
I believe generally one year is, when we approve things with conditions, it's one year. It's Ed Veal. Unless we set more strict
Unless we set more strict guidelines, but with lot line adjustments, I know that they're not technically final anyway until deeds change hands.
Thank you.
Okay, no further comments, I'll move on to the next case, the case is number two zero 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 three SUB, this is an application for a fourteen lot subdivision from Robert De Brito. Two new roads will be constructed as a part of the subdivision. The property is identified as tax map seven lot one N and is located off of Mitchell Road, Scenic Road in Nottingham. So again, like the previous one, we have an application, it has yet to be accepted by the, by the board. We've had a design review for this project. And there is staff comments. And so before we go through the acceptance, we just quickly go through some of the staff comments or go through the staff comments. So there are two waiver applications requested. One is for driveway design and construction standards. We do not have to act on those waivers until after the acceptance. Am I correct in that stuff? Waivers have to be voted on individually prior to approval. So those don't need to be voted on separately for the application completeness, because we still need to review those. So the waivers are for the construction road standards, three to one slope. They are requesting it to side slope of two to one. And staff suggests a review by the road agent. So the road agent will review these plans and get comments back on that waiver request. Request for a construction of a cul-de-sac, all cul-de-sacs shall be permitted by granting a waiver from the board. So that would be for this specific cul-de-sac. The other ones here, that we have elements in need of clarification, additional information provision before the approval. And that's, this is information that we will go through during the approval process. But I just want to let members aware, be aware of what we still will be looking for. Results of the historical archaeological investigation. Environmental impacts. Traffic analysis. Sprinklers. Slope easements. Utility easements, drainage easements. I think some spelling corrections, showing lengths of the roads. And then there are some corrections, some spelling and some correct emails. And then the applicant has responded to a lot of those, if not all of those, comments. And at this point, I would like to, I guess, ask Steph if the review is complete and if, in your opinion, the application is complete with all of the information we received.
Yes, with the, those clarifying details, in my opinion, I do believe it is complete.
So this is a lot of information for the board, and we'll be having you know, a bit of review on this, so I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the information that is provided. And we'll have to have some time to go through that. So at this point, if there's any questions from the board, I'd like to entertain those. This would be for the acceptance. Again, I'll, I will ask the applicant to just run through a quick presentation on what is proposed. Okay, if the applicant's agent is here, if you could maybe just provide a little bit of information on the application you've submitted.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering. With me tonight is Robert De Berto. We are looking to subdivide fourteen lots off from Mitchell Road. This piece of property, as the chairman pointed out, came before the board as a conceptual design review at one point late here. The proposal consists of providing a loop road through the proposed parcel provide access to fourteen acre, fourteen building lots, most of which would have frontage on the new loop road. We do have one proposed cul-de-sac that would provide frontage and access to building area on the other side of a small wetland. So we do have two wetland impacts, the total wetland impact area is approximately seven thousand square feet size. Might be appropriate for us to meet with the conservation commission. Both of those impact areas are designed using the latest best management practices. So we've got a larger box culvert under one of the wetlands, the more major of the two wetland crossings. And then we have a, an oversized culvert with a berry depth on the second crossing. Again, the two to one side slope waiver request is limited to the wetland crossings. And that's in an effort to reduce the overall impact on the wetlands. We do have a couple of outstanding issues that we're still working through, as I noted in my response back to your staff planner. The first is the Division of Historical Resources, per section one oh six of the Clean Water Act. We are required to file with Division of Historical Resources, there is a stone of some kind on the site. We assume that it might be a grave of some kind, and so Division of Historical Resources has asked that we hire an archaeological consultant to review what that might be. For the time being, we have located the perimeter of what is visible on site. And we've applied the state's twenty-five foot required buffer around that. As the investigation around that stone continues, what may happen is if there's further evidence of historical impact around the stone outside of the areas that we've located, that buffer, due to the fact that the area of impact may increase, the buffer would then increase also, so that the twenty-five foot buffer would just take up more land mass around the sides of it. The second outstanding issue is the Natural Heritage Bureau is charged with reviewing rare and endangered species, both plants and animals. And I think we all know that that area in general has considerable amount of snakes and turtles habitat in that area. And so we're working with Kim Tuttle with the Natural Heritage Bureau and Fish and Game. Again, our project sites, as our last project and our last presentation of this board employs all of the best management practices for those types of species. So for an example, we use, instead of plastic netting products, we're proposing to use all natural fibers so that that is snake friendly during construction. We're proposing mold sperm sediment erosion control devices so that amphibians and even larger mammals don't get caught up in silt fences, things of that nature. And then again, the large and oversized culvert structures for the purposes of allowing transmission through those devices through the wetland areas. All of those areas are designed in the most restrictive areas of the crossings possible. We did undergo soils mapping on the entire site, we are required to file for an alteration of terrain permit, which we have done, and we would have their review and recommendations back to us at the same time that this board is undergoing their review of the application. Their review is largely stormwater impacts and stormwater design. All of the stormwater from the impervious areas of this project site are being captured and treated through a device called a gravel wetland or multiple gravel wetlands. And that allows us to treat for phosphates, nitrogen and nitrates, as well as hydrocarbons. It allows us to attenuate flow, so it allows us to reduce the amount of flow leaving the site and allows us to control our volumetric increases to the wetlands on site. And again, those are all designed in accordance with the best management practices of the alteration of terrain. And then lastly, we understand that this board would have liked to see a traffic analysis. So last fall, we undertook traffic counts on Mitchell Road as well as Smoke Street. And we've prepared and submitted to the board a full traffic impact analysis for this project site, which I would expect that when this project goes for engineering review would also be reviewed at the same time. We are on, obviously, well and septic, since we're in Nottingham. We believe that we meet all of the rules for NHDES for well and septic design, as well as the rules for the town of Nottingham. So typically, if I were standing before you, I'd bring you through our plan set in greater detail. I will not do that tonight, and if there are further questions about the detailed plans that we put together, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you have. We did try and respond completely to Steph's comment letter so that the board had all of the information and all of our responses for tonight's meeting. And all of the changes that they've asked for, she's asked for, have been implemented into the plans that we submitted for the board again for tonight's meeting. Again, if you have any questions of me or Mr. De Berto, we'd be happy to try and answer them tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Berry. So we would like to have any comments from the board regarding or questions, just the acceptance of the application, that's the materials that have been submitted. Making sure that those are complete, we do have recommendations from staff that all of the information to them appears complete. And we would have to go on, undergo a more detailed review before we get into really the details of the plans and documents. Okay. I was wondering if I was muted for that.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
They filed for the DHRU, and they're doing an archaeological study. Do you know if they're doing any ground penetrating to look for the burial there, like what all, does that involve, do you know, Mr. Berry?
So the consultant that we've hired, her name is Victoria Bunker, and in our discussions with her, we've recommended, and I believe she's concurred, that that might be appropriate in this case, so I believe that'll be undertaken.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, I'll open it up to public, and really, I just want to remind people, this is for the acceptance only, these are materials that have been submitted. Our staff has gone through, reviewed the materials, make sure that everything is complete, that everything is there that we need as the board to undertake a more detailed review. So this application, once accepted, will go into an approval phase, which we will hold an additional public hearing once we have reviewed all of the documents that are submitted. Just want to make that clear. So for people in the public, if you do have questions about the material submitted, please take this time to ask that question. All of the materials are available on our website, or on the town's website under the planning department. So at this point, anybody from the public have comment on the acceptance of the application?
I have one hand raised from Steve Kerwood.
Okay, please unmute him.
I'm gonna unmute him. And Steve, you're all set.
Hi there, let me get the active video going here. My apologies, I would have been at the earlier hearings on this, except, actually, I don't believe we got proper notice, we were away and there was we never accepted a certified letter of the earlier hearing, so please forgive me if I'm gonna raise some questions now that you've already gone over before. I have a procedural question for you, what's the access to the recordings of these proceedings? What's the public access?
That is a good question, we are recording this session, and all of the minutes are taken. And Joanna or Steph, could you, typically, we have all of the recordings done and they're shown on local channel. Maybe Joanna, could you comment about that?
Yes, so Mr. Kerwood, are you referring to past recordings or this current recording?
Well, this current session especially, although there's access to what's been said previously, that would be helpful.
Okay, so within the week, this recording will be up on our Zoom page, which you can access from the town website. You can also access all of the previous recordings from previous hearings on that Zoom page as well. I'm sorry, not Zoom, YouTube page.
YouTube, okay, YouTube.
That's what I meant to say.
Facebook Live, or maybe it's a Google session.
Right.
Or is it a Microsoft Teams meeting?
YouTube page.
Okay, so I have, I guess as a member of the public, I'm not, I don't know if I'm allowed to object to you guys moving to acceptance, but I think there are a number of points here that I'm not sure have been addressed by the proposer. My perspective on this is that I'm probably the biggest butter to this. I am on the north side of Mitchell Road next to this property. My family first bought this property in about nineteen fifty-one, and I've been here off and on my entire life. I was in first grade with Gunner Foss, if you know him at all. So there's a reason why there was been no building on this side of Mitchell Road up until the Sutton Street development went in now twenty, twenty-five years ago. It's because of the wetlands that are there. So I have some questions, is there an environmental impact statement that's been prepared that I'm missing here? Because what I found on your website is just sort of a paragraph or two saying, hey, we're fine here, but I, is there a more detailed environmental impact statement?
I haven't read through all of the information we do have, we do have, all of the, the applicant has provided all of the wetlands flagged and designated on maps, so that's been done. And Mr. Berry, if you could expand on what you have submitted for the impact?
So as part of the plan set, we provided a wetland scientist who went out, flagged the site and flagged all of the poorly drained jurisdictional wetlands on site, as well as all of the very poorly drained wetlands that reside in the center of those wetlands. In addition to that, we had a site-specific soils map done, so there was a soils mapping of the entire project site as well. We have an impact statement that discusses things like sediment erosion control, vegetation loss, loss of wetlands. We have a complete stormwater analysis that was done, which discusses stormwater impacts and the mitigation that goes into place for those types of impacts. And then as part of the application process, as I previously discussed, we have impact assessment that is done by the Natural Heritage Bureau and then delegated to Fish and Game. So in addition to all those reports, as I said, we did provide a, an impact analysis and statement which we had previously submitted to the board for another project and had been accepted under that project's guidelines also.
I'm confused, another project involving this parcel of land?
No, he was just, let me, let me take this, Mr. Barry. He was just referring to this, this statement format was used in a different application. So just the format itself. Now, that doesn't mean that this format is applicable to cover everything for this application. And just thumbing through it, it is in the purview of the planning board to request additional information of the applicant if we feel that the information submitted is not sufficient. So.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would, I have a series of questions, which I don't think these documents answer. For example, in the wetlands area, and as I said, I, do I have to give my age? But I was born in 1947. I've been here, as I said, off and on 70 years. Haven't always lived here, been living here for the last 20. In this time that I've been here, both as a kid and as an adult, I've encountered moose in that area because it's wetland and they love his moose brows. But to the, the question that I have here is, I don't see any documentation of how they're gonna deal with some of the endangered or threatened species that are here in this wetlands. In particular, I've observed the eastern box turtle, which is considered endangered. I've also seen the black racer snake, which is considered threatened. This is by the New Hampshire Department of Fish and Game as well as the feds. And I'd have to ask if, I'm not sure, but I suspect that I've seen the fowler's toad, which is also a threat. Turtle, the eastern box turtle, yes, I don't know about the blandings, maybe. But I don't see anything discussing that about the species that are here.
So let me just, sorry to interrupt you, but we, we will have more information. I think the applicant had stated that those endangered species and other impact reports are still forthwith, they're still coming.
Then, but my question is, why would you want to move ahead with approval, I'm sorry, of acceptance of this application with those deficiencies in this application? It's silent on that. On the other part, on the, another thing that it's silent on is the question of wetlands mitigation. There's gonna be tremendous disturbance to the wetlands, assuming that this goes forward. I heard, I heard the applicant talk about, you know, large culverts and such. These, since you're starting to displace wetlands, you need to mitigate them. When the power lines that are on our other side of the property, which is up on Route 4, when the state redid that intersection of Smoke Street and Route 4, which was like really bad, and moved some stone walls, there was a wetlands mitigation plan because there's a stream that runs through there. And it was, it was carefully done to be sure that the critters that were there, they might have to move, but they would have a place to move to. I don't see any discussion of wetlands mitigation here.
So let me, let me just react to that one as well. So the wetlands impacts are a state permit, and those will be submitted if they haven't been already. And we will, we, the Nottingham Planning Board, will not approve it until we see that wetlands impact approved by the state. And so that's part of this whole process that moves along. And at any, any point, you know, we can ask for more mitigation or less mitigation, or probably not less, but if, so, yeah, I mean, it's still, while there's a lot of questions, we don't have all, we haven't reviewed all the documentation. We're just looking to make sure that we have documentation that meets our criteria so that we can start reviewing these in depth with, because without that, we won't be able to have any of the staff review it, such as the police, fire, emergency services, road agent. So, you know, the acceptance kind of kicks that review in, into gear.
Well, I understand that. On the other hand, I would, wouldn't want this project to waste the planning board's time if it's not up to snuff on these issues. And they can, let me ask the, the applicant, have you, they started the state approval process on the wetlands?
If you could answer that, Mr. Barry.
Sir, yes, we have compiled our application. And as I mentioned in my previous statements, we would like to meet with the Conservation Commission to review that application, and then it would be filed with the state of New Hampshire. The alteration of terrain package has been compiled and also has been submitted.
Is that available for public review yet?
The wetlands application, once it is submitted to the Conservation Commission, will then be of public record, yes.
Yeah, and that's, that'll be the Nottingham, that's the Nottingham Conservation Commission.
See, you know, money's tight right now, budgets are tight. You know, there's a discussion in here about the fiscal impact of all of this and, and school kids, which I'm not sure that I agree with, when I've seen the number, how people have moved into our, the developments here. But mostly, I, if there's a real problem with this, I would hate to see us spending the, the resources to go through this if it's not gonna pass muster at the, at the state level. But let me, let me conclude with a couple of other questions that I have on this report. Again, I, I find this response on the Captain Smith grave site woefully inadequate. It just simply kicks the can down, well, we're gonna hire somebody. This is, so this house that I'm speaking to you from was constructed in 1755 by Val Leathers. He served as a lieutenant and then later a captain in the, you know, for the Revolutionary War. Those four dudes down there at Nottingham Square that went off as generals while Val Leathers left as a lieutenant, he came back. From what we know, and again, we're happy to dig deeper, there are eight to 10 people buried there as a result of some kind of, we believe, some sort of epidemic. You know, this is just something that's been passed down verbally by a few neighbors, and I'm not sure how accurate that is, but it's, it would be a, it may be a more substantial grave site. The stone, the boulder is enormous. It's what, 20 feet long or something, 15 feet long and as tall as a person? It's not exactly a rock. And inscribed on it is the name of Captain John Smith. And we're also looking to, to see if Smith was married maybe to a Leathers daughter or, or a cousin or something, because originally they would have had about 500 acres here. There's another set of graves down Smoke Street, by the way, associated with them. But they marked the kid, the people, there were a lot of people that were there. We think it was some sort of a, some sort of a plague or something that suddenly people got sick and died, you know? Cholera would take out a lot of people back then. So this submission is woefully inadequate, just, oh, well, we're gonna hire people to look at this, let's just go ahead. The, and, oh, well, we'll give 25 feet, but we'll make it bigger. Well, what actually is your consideration for the lot lines of the subdivision that you're proposing, given that this may be something of a substantial grave site? And what kind of access, of course, would any heirs, I'm sorry, any descendants have? There are some Leathers that live in Dover and that live in Durham that I'm aware of because when we worked on the house, they, we spoke with them. So I, there's just, there's just so many things that are, are missing from this that I'm very, that I'm concerned about. Last but not least, the, the traffic situation on this road, and other abutters may want to talk about it. There's now so much traffic on this scenic road, which is a dirt road, that the potholes are constantly forming at the intersection with Smoke Street and well up the street. It's a nightmare. It's a muddy nightmare in mud season. Now, for years, you know, John Farnold wrestled with this question of whether or not it would get paved, and it's a scenic road, so they don't get paved. But adding another 14 more houses right near this intersection, that's gonna be their way out to Route 4. And I, I, well, I think the short version of what I think is going on, I don't think it's a responsible use of, of the land to have that much impact. Sure, I think some more houses could go there, but another 14 households? So those are the questions that I, I have, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't think that they have met the, your criteria of reporting on things enough to move ahead to actually have a full application. I think they should come back in front of this board and respond to some of these questions. And there may be others, obviously, that, that folks are gonna raise here. Because as you know, once this happens, it's forever.
All right, well, I appreciate your, your input and comments. There is a pretty stringent process to this. And while this acceptance is, is really the, the first initialization of the project itself, there's a lot more details to get fleshed out. There is permits that still need to be applied for. Those are all things that happen in the normal course that are done after the application is accepted. And, and so that, that is typically the normal process. But I do understand your concerns, and I think there are, they are concerns that we've voiced in the past to this applicant. And so throughout this process, we will be asking for those specific answers and to make sure, you know, an archaeological, archaeologist is hired so that they will go out and determine the historic nature of those graves that are out there, that stone. We just don't know yet what those are. And, and to your opinion, yes, that's information that we need to know, but it's not a need to know to get this application accepted because there's a lot more work to be done as far as reviews and progress to get through the system if they are to get an approval.
Thank you for that explanation. One other question, at what point in this process do they need to demonstrate their fiscal strength to proceed in the way that they said that they want to proceed?
Their fiscal, fiscal strength relative to the impacts?
That's correct. I mean, they're making representations, they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that.
Well, every, yeah, every, everything that they say they're going to do, they will need to do. There might be additional things that the town is requiring them to do. That will be, you know, up to them whether they want to accept those to, to get an approval. So yeah, I think those are some more important things that still need to get answered. But we do have, as far as impacts, you know, we, the, the town institutes impact fees for all new houses that goes towards school impacts and emergency fire as well as recreation. So there are impact fees relative to the, each, each house lot that is built. All right. I'd like to move on to hear anyone else that has comments relative to the acceptance of this application. And if it's, if it, please, just if it's some new information that Mr. Kerwood did not bring up, then we'd appreciate that. If it's just repetitive, then we've got a good explanation of those concerns.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a visual hand raised from Ms. Patricia Rue. Is that how you say your, sorry, I'll let you introduce yourself here now.
Okay, all right, it's breaks. I'm on Rachel Wright across from where the development is going. Almost across from Boulder, yeah. One question, one part of this that I haven't heard addressed today, I know that at the first planning board meeting, there was discussion about also a lot number 15, which was at the end of one of the cul-de-sacs, which was technically in Barrington, but had to have access from Mitchell Road in Nottingham. And I'm concerned that, and also a question that, that you're talking about the environmental and the impact as far as all the cars, which could mean probably 30 more cars in and out every day on the road. There's also the question of that, and we're also talking school buses. But there's also that, with that additional lot being in Barrington, would also be, would have to be accessed through, from Mitchell Road to the cul-de-sacs, whichever one it falls under, which would also mean not only the additional cars, which is only a couple, but also mean the potential and probability of a couple of school buses from Barrington every day. And school buses, I mean, the road, Stephen was right, that road is a mess and it's, it's difficult. Yeah, and it's a cut through. And I'm just, I'm just wondering what, at what point that particular lot is going to be included? Or is that something that, oh, once we've got them, all these lots in, we're gonna add one more lot, which is gonna, you know, present a lot more impact from the Barrington traffic, really, with school buses and such?
So currently, the cul-de-sac does not connect into the Barrington side of this. The applicant is required and as well as this board to inform Barrington of this subdivision that's happening in Nottingham. So that has been done, but currently, the, the plan does not show a connection into Barrington. So right now, all lots would be within Nottingham and the roads would only access lots that are in Nottingham.
So has that a lot been canned or?
Well, it's, there's a lot configuration. They have lots along the town line of Barrington and Nottingham, but they don't have any lots in Barrington at all.
Okay, has that, has the lot, has the plan changed because of the wetlands and the culverts? And maybe has it pushed back a little bit to exclude?
Well.
Is it a new plan or?
Yes, yes, there are new plans. If, if you were involved with any of the design, the concept reviews. So this would be taking those comments and incorporating them into the package that we have received in this application. And they do have an updated lot map.
Where can I get that or see that?
Yeah, and that's, that, you can find that right on the town's website.
I didn't see it earlier.
And in the planning department, there is meetings and agenda and information that's there. Okay, I'm getting a, a nod, no, that they're, they're not posted there.
I didn't see it today, yeah.
Joanna, could you confirm the, the location of those? That they're up?
I will, I will confirm that. Just give me a few moments, please.
Yep, so that, that information will be up if not, if not already.
Okay.
I, I looked earlier today and I did find it.
Yeah, it was, Ed, if you click on the agenda for tonight, then, then there's the individual documents for each case that's on that. The, the one that is the plan for this case is a very large file, so it'll take a little while for it to open. I think it's 50 pages.
I didn't see that.
It should be, if you, if you find the agenda for tonight and click on, on that link, then individual, the individual items for tonight's agenda with more detail are shown there.
Yes, it's, it's called Stone Grade Drive in Lipazon, I think is how you would say the other name.
Joanna, could you just quickly do a screen share just to make sure that people know where that is?
Absolutely.
Just navigate to it.
Okay, so you go to Planning Board, go to Agenda 513, click on that.
Could you, could you go back to that? You, you went through it pretty quickly.
I apologize.
Yeah, I thought I did that today and I didn't see them.
Okay, so you're on the Planning Board page. Scroll down to Agendas, click on the 513 Agenda and Docs.
Click on the 513 Agenda and Docs. Scroll down to this one right here, has the subplans for Stone Grade Drive, and I think it's Lipazon Drive.
Okay, maybe I didn't see.
Yeah, so those will be all of the documents relative to the application.
Okay, again, I must have missed that.
That's okay, I just want to make sure that you understand where those are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Any other public wishing to comment on the application itself? Okay, just one more time, anybody in the public want any questions or comments about the application? Okay, let me bring it back to the board.
Dirk, we have one hand raised that just went up.
Okay, unmute that.
All right, Nicole, you are unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, you can hear me. I'm in a butter, and I know that you don't want to hear repeat comments that other folks have said tonight. Being in a butter, we just want to echo that two people that spoke tonight about this, we had the same concerns that they did. So we just wanted to have, if there's any value to a hand count of the people that will be impacted by this, we definitely had concerns about wetland services and what they provide in terms of water quality and flood control and that kind of thing, and the wildlife that was brought up. We have seen some of those turtle species as well. We're also very concerned about the lot that Patricia had just spoken about, so that kind of answered a little bit of a concern that we had. But that's all that I wanted to say, and I know sometimes there is value in hearing from multiple concerns from stakeholders that are nearby, so that's really all I had to comment on, and so thank you.
Yep, no, thank you for your comments. And yes, we, as a planning board, we value those comments and the regulations that we do have in place, and knowing that this is a scenic road is very important to this community, to our whole master plan itself of our community. So this is something that we'll talk about again quite in depth. I know the current application is a bit different than the previous one. So the planning board members hasn't, have not been able to fully review these and come up with their own comments, so that will be happening in the future.
Mr. Chairman, Ed Veal, just a couple of quick items. For one, for anybody that's on the meeting, just a reminder, use the chat button and just sign in with your name so we have a list so we can keep, because this is a public hearing. Nicole, I don't think we have your name, your full name, on there. If you could just put that in, and then any of the other individuals that are listening in tonight, if you could just pop on there and sign in. I believe the prior meeting was a conceptual, to answer the question from Mr. Kerwood about notice, conceptual, I believe, do not get noticed to a butters because they're completely just a high-level, non-binding, just early discussion with people. And then some of the items that they brought up are things we can bring up during the next phase, which is if we accept this as complete, then we can get into those really detailed items, require more items, send it to other boards and departments for review, as well as third-party review with engineering firms and such, if necessary or desired.
Thanks, Ed. And any other comments from the board or action from the board on this application?
I just need to raise an objection. Mr. Chairman, I know you're asking for the board, but a point of order or clarification here?
Sure, go ahead.
I just heard that apparently there was no legal requirement to notify me about the previous conceptualization, that direct abutters don't get told of those things?
That's correct. Yep, that is true. We have in our community a conceptual design review that allows any, anybody, any landowner to come in and talk to the board informally about what they would like to do with their land, and those are not notified to any abutters. They are not an official, it's a non-binding conversation. Anything that's presented by an applicant is general in concept and nature, and really, it's to help applicants direct through the process. What would the planning board like to see, or what is the next steps for this applicant? If he does become an applicant?
So does that mean that any of the, what you call staff comments, aren't official documents, or just simply informal opinions that don't enter into the record?
No, this is, what the staff comments are, are comments on the application that's before us tonight. So all of the materials that you see on the website, those are the application materials that are official, and the staff has reviewed those. They are submitted to the planning board two weeks in advance of this meeting so that they can have time to review them, and we can have time to review them. And then they're presented at this meeting.
But there's no public notice given at all of a conceptual session with the board?
Nope, there's a public notice of this meeting.
Is this the only, I'm sorry, is this the only official proceeding on this project then in front of this planning board today?
That's correct, I believe, this Ed Veal. Ms. Kerwood, I apologize for being confusing on that. So the state RSA allows for conceptual reviews, and again, they're not at this level of detail that we see tonight. They're much more like pen and paper kind of items, just to kind of give general guidance and feedback, but no, we can't give very strongly detailed responses during that phase for applicants. Again, it's just to kind of help guide them towards the decision if they're going to do either a design review or an application like this. So the legal notice of receiving mail does not occur for that. There is generally an agenda that's posted that a conceptual may occur, but again, there's no actual, like, legal notice.
Okay, Mr. Veal, I'm totally confused here, because when we came back from our travels, we saw that there was an attempt to deliver a certified document to us that we finally caught up with that was not timely. It was the day after the hearing. So what would have been the basis of somebody sending us a certified document if this is the first time that you had any kind of official session on this?
Go ahead, Joanna, if you want to answer that.
Rio has also.
Hold on, hold on, let us answer that.
Okay.
So as Mr. Veal had pointed out, that there's two different kinds of meetings. So this case did come before the board as a design review. That is a noticed review and a noticed hearing. That is what you did get in your mailbox.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not crazy, because it made it sound like, no, no, no.
Yes, Mr. Veal is accurate in saying that conceptuals do come before the board, and those are not noticed. So I'll have to look back and see if there is, if there was a conceptual for this, and then a design review, and then now they're before the board, and I just looked back real quick to see that indeed you did receive a notice in 2019 for a design review.
Okay, I did not receive the notice on a timely basis. Never got to me, but the record showed, I was not properly served. And in fact, this is not the first, this is not the first proceeding here, as was just being represented to me a few moments ago.
Yeah, I apologize. That's my mistake. I was confusing with another, another case with the conceptual versus the design review. Design reviews, as Ms. Joanna pointed out, are legally noticed.
Okay, well, all right, I have no standing here, except as a citizen, as a voter, but I object to the proceedings as they proceeded then with the misinformation and with apparent willingness to proceed to the notion of accepting an application, I think is deficient along those lines. I just want the record to show that. Thank you.
So I'm going to close the public meeting for the acceptance and bring back to the board for discussion or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have, oh.
I'm sorry. I was going to say that you have your hand raised, Leanne, so go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to bring up, I know we typically have accepted applications when we're waiting to hear back about permits and things that the applicant has submitted. In this case, there seems to be a lot of outstanding information that we're waiting to hear back on, and the DES application hasn't even been submitted yet. So I'm just wondering if everything has been met to fulfill the application requirement.
Okay, I mean, we have the options of of accepting, continuing, or denying. And so those are the three options we have at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Berry would like to say something. Can I unmute him?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to politely point out that this process has a few distinct steps in it. The first is acceptance of an application, and your rules, regulations, bylaws have a checklist that is required to be fulfilled as part of accepting the application. So the question is whether or not I have submitted enough information for the board to substantially review at some point in the future, after tonight, to see whether we have met the requirements of your subdivision regulations as well as your zoning ordinance. The details that the abutters have brought up, and even your staff planner has brought up, and I did provide some information for as part of tonight's proceeding, are sort of very detailed answers and reports that are typically provided as part of the proceedings of the application, and not necessarily provided on day one of the application. And so I would respectfully disagree with the board member that the information that is to be provided, I'm very aware of the process, very aware of the information that I need to provide this board and other boards throughout the state, and it is forthcoming, but it is not part of the board's requirements for an accepted application for a formal review and proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. So it's back to the board. We do need to take an action on this. Does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a clarification question. If we have comment or feel that the materials provided have not provided enough depth in terms of environmental impact or fiscal or traffic, to clarify, we can just request the expansion of that study once accepted, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and if it's something that's deficient, even though, you know, his statement or a statement may be that there is no impact, so that could clearly fill out that check mark, it is up to the board, its consultants, staff, to confirm that there is no impact or identify those impacts.
Mr. Chairman, Ed Veal, I'm going to move that we accept the application for case 20-003, that should be as complete.
There's a motion. Any member second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion before a vote?
Just one comment, Joe Clough, in light of the comments that were made by the attendees, and I want to thank everyone for coming to provide their perspective. I think it's worth noting that this process is intended, like the conceptual design review, and this process to accept. It's layered such that you don't put an overdue burden on private landowners in the process of doing something with their land, but we are a very conservation-based town in the way that we look at a lot of these plans. As we go deeper into the plan, we will take a lot of those comments under guidance. So prior to voting, I just want to make a comment that accepting application as it is with the conditions that have been stated, it's not to say that it will be taken lightly going forward.
Thank you. So there is a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that? Was that Ian?
Yep.
Some motion and second, any more discussion? I'll do a roll call. Gary Anderson? Gary, are you still on?
Yes.
So is that the answer? Are you answering yes to the motion? Gary, can you hear us?
Here I am.
There you are.
That's a yes to the motion.
Thank you. Ian?
Yes.
Ed Veal?
Yes.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
And Dirk Rottenhies, yes. So the application has been accepted, and I do appreciate all the comments for the people that came out tonight. There is a record that will be had here, and then we will also be reviewing this material over the course of the next couple of weeks, and then we will reconvene, and you will be, make sure I'm clear on this, Joanna. Will these applicant, or will the abutters be re-notified?
No, abutters are not re-notified. The board will determine tonight what date and what time the next time this case will be heard, and the abutters are not re-notified.
Then I would like to turn it back to the applicant to find out what their timeframe is, if they can get us materials by the next meeting or the meeting afterwards for the items that were on the comment letter.
Mr. Chairman, I think I pointed out in my presentation, and I believe Steph pointed out in her latest review that we had addressed all of the comments in her comment letter, with the exception of the outstanding issues related to Section 106, the Division of Historical Resources and Natural Heritage Bureau.
Okay, thank you. When do you expect the Section 106 and the Natural Heritage Bureau information?
I don't have a definite timeline on that. Both fish and game and the archaeological study, they'll take the, you know, the time they need to do that. I think what myself and the applicant might like to do is, I understand that you have an engineering company that reviews these plans, maybe send the plans out for review. We could have a staff, some sort of staff meeting to review this with your staff while the fishing game and the archaeological study are taking place, and then if we can reconvene in 30 days, if we have these studies completed at that point, then we'd be ready to present them to you then.
Okay, that sounds fair, and I think it would take 30 days for us to make sure that we go through it thoroughly and have any consultants and staff review this, so. Joanna, is there, what is the 30-day date?
June 10th.
June 10th?
Yep, it's the next meeting, or two meetings from now.
Okay. So we would continue this case to the June 10th at 7:00. And that continue?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, point of order. Ed Veal, before we do I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, point of order. Ed Veale, before we do any kind of continuation, I know the applicant, Mr. Barry, has indicated, you know, that he's going to be going to the CONCOM. Should we formally request, request that now that we're at that point, we can have, we can request road agent review, fire review, CONCOM input?
Yes, this needs to go, this will go to all agencies, yeah, all ton of agencies and boards.
And to touch back upon some of the public comment and board comment, the environmental impact assessment, the response from the applicant is that they feel the, that's addressed in the fiscal impact analysis. And I agree that I don't, I do not feel that what's listed in there is sufficient based on, on what we indicated in our subdivision regs on, for some of the items that we'd like to see addressed for, for an environmental impact assessment, especially with wildlife.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get these out for review in detail and get everybody's comment in. Okay, well, thank you. Do I need a vote to continue it until? Okay, so I would like to have someone make a motion that we continue this case till June 10th at 7:00.
Mr. Chairman, I saw a move.
A second.
Motion is second by Gary Anderson. I'll roll call. Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veale?
Yes.
Joe Cluff?
Yeah.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
And Dirk is yes.
And just a reminder to the, the people that are here, the butters, I know we just said it, but there's no more legal notice. So to follow, you'd want to keep track of our, look online at the Nottingham Planning Board site and look at our agendas. So we won't be doing anything between, on this publicly between now and June 10th. June 10th would be the next public hearing where we would either review this case additionally or have a continuation again if one was so requested.
And we will be, we will be holding additional public hearings. So the next meeting will have a public hearing as well where public can make comment, probably a similar format like this. I'm expecting by, maybe by June 10th, we'll still be doing Zoom meetings. If you do have other comments, you can also provide written comment and submit it to the planning staff in Nottingham. Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. We do appreciate it.
Yep, yep, thank you. So the next, that, that ends our public hearings. And the only other thing that I have is acceptance of bylaws. I'm not sure what, where we left off with, with our bylaws. I think we were just approving them or were we modifying those?
Um, yeah, there were a couple of edits. I made those edits. It was mostly to the dates. And I sent them out again. You can choose to accept them, but you can't sign them still.
Right, right.
So if you want to just push them off till we are meeting again in person, that's fine.
Yep, let's do that.
I also submitted minutes from the last meeting. I've received edits and I've taken care of them. Is the board interested in voting on those tonight or wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, Joanna, what was the date on those again?
The April, April 27th, right?
And the edits I saw were all very minor. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the minutes to April 27th, 2020 as amended.
Motion, any second?
Second.
Who was that? Joe Cluff, second. All right, roll call. Vote. Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veale?
Yes.
Joe Cluff?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
And Dirk's yes. So those are the minutes. Let me just quickly go around to see if there's any other comments from, from the board or any updates. Joanna, do you have anything?
Yes, I sent out a message that just to follow up. The Paratus case is going to be heard at the next meeting. As well as the Mill Pond case. They will be heard at the zoning board hearing for their variance for the hydrogeological study and pending their approval or denial on that, they will be on the agenda for the 27th.
Could you repeat that? The, who was having a hydrogeological? The Paratus?
The Mill Pond Road case, the Millers.
Oh, okay, separate, sorry.
Yeah. So we'll have two cases for our next meeting. Steph, we're not having a conceptual, correct? She agreed to go to June?
Yes, I believe it's June 10th that she agreed to.
Okay, all right. So currently it's just those two cases for the, for the May 27th.
Okay. Thank you. Steph, do you have anything?
I just have one thing. So the SRPC traffic count, annual traffic count letters went out. Last week, we emailed them this year because I couldn't get into the office. So I just wanted to let you guys know that DOT has requested you do traffic counts in Nottingham on New Hampshire 156, 152, US 4, Freeman Hall Road, McCrillis Road, Smoke Street, and Mill Pond Road. And if you guys are interested in any additional counts, those would be called supplemental counts. Anything that you need for town use. You can talk to Chris Sterndell and arrange that with the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. If there are any project areas, anything like that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Ian, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Leanne?
No, nothing.
Gary?
Yeah. So SRPC is doing a Zoom meeting this Friday and mainly it's talking about COVID and really how SRPC can better be prepared for the future, but also how can SRPC help tech, using technical expertise to provide help for our communities and for recovery and preparedness. So if anybody has any input toward that, I'm sure Steph or myself could start that conversation.
Great, thank you. Joe, do you have anything?
Just in light of Steph's notice that they would be doing traffic studies, I'm curious if there's any interest in reconvening the transportation subcommittee. Is there anything we'd like to talk about or find targeted areas for other traffic studies, especially in light of that? Some previous topics we had on that board.
Right, yeah, we, we really do need to get back on top of that. There are some action items that we, we do need to take care of. Steph, is there a deadline for noticing to getting information to Chris or you on potentially additional counts?
We're going to be constrained by our limited season. Our, our timeline has been shortened. So from here on out, it's kind of a first come, first served basis as far as what we can fit into the season. So the sooner the better. But there's no cutoff date at this time.
All right, Joe, maybe what I'll do is I'll circ, recirculate the last agenda with some items on that.
Sounds good.
Tyler, do you have any updates for Selectman?
Not too much. I mean, just, again, everything's, you know, because of what's going on, it's you know, doing the same thing, Zoom meetings. And I'd say the big topic at the last meeting though was again, was about our root floor property, what we're going to do with it. So we'll be hearing more. You know, probably Monday night or night, our next meeting. So stay tuned for that.
Thank you. Ed?
Nothing new, sir.
Okay. I appreciate everyone's attendance. I just need one more motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
The motion, anyone second?
Second.
Motion is second. I'm not going to do a roll call. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.